Good evening and welcome to the April fourteenth, twenty twenty five Tualton City Council Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and first item on our agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight it will be led by Counselor Sacco.
Okay, everybody please stand and take the plaque which you're writing over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as far all.
Thank you, Counselor Sacco. That brings us to announcements, and our first announcement tonight is the month of the chil- not month of the Military Child Recognition, and we have a representative here today? Is she here? It's Lorraine, right? Maybe she's running late, we'll circle back. All right, that will bring us, we'll circle back to item number one. Item number two is a proclamation declaring April twenty twenty five as Parkinson's Awareness Month, and this will be read by Council President Pratt.
Whereas Parkinson's disease is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the world, affecting between one and one and a half million Americans and between seven and ten million people around the world, and whereas the World Health Organization estimates that globally, the prevalence of Parkinson's disease has doubled in the past twenty-five years, and disability and death due to PD are increasing faster than any other neurological disease, and whereas there is no known cause of Parkinson's, though scientists and researchers believe a unique combination of genetics, environment, lifestyle, and other factors are at play for each person who develops it, and whereas currently there is no objective test or biomarker to diagnose or predict Parkinson's, and no cure or treatment able to slow or stop the progression of the disease. While most people living with Parkinson's are older than sixty-five, fifteen percent of people with Parkinson's are diagnosed before age fifty, and whereas the effects of Parkinson's on movement-like tremors and slowness are often the most visible symptoms, other impacts of Parkinson's not related to movement like emotional and cognitive challenges sometimes have an even greater effect on the quality of life. And whereas even early in diagnosis rehabilitation therapies including but not limited to physical, occupational, and speech therapies are essential at all stages of Parkinson's to prevent or delay problems, minimize the impact of symptoms, and maintain daily functioning as Parkinson's progresses, and whereas Parkinson's is not life-threatening, however, it is progressive and very complex and can affect almost every part of the body, ranging from how you move to how you feel to how you think and process. Education and support services like the ones provided by the Davis Finney Foundation and other organizations are needed to inform, empower, and improve the quality of life of those living with Parkinson's and their care partners. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tualton, Oregon, that April twenty twenty five is Parkinson's Awareness Month in the City of Tualton. Introduced and adopted this fourteenth day of April twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Item number three is proclamation declaring April twentieth through April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty five as Volunteer Appreciation Week in the City of Tualton. I believe Stacy's going to have a little presentation first, and then we'll have Counselor Brooks read the proclamation. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening again, Mayor and councilors. So National Volunteer Week occurs annually on the third week of April, every year, and twenty twenty-four was no exception to the generous amount of time that our community members volunteered their time with the city. Approximately seven hundred and fifty volunteers donated about sixteen thousand hours of their time, and this is equivalent to about eight full-time employees in our city. This year, we will recognize our volunteers by sending thank you cards to volunteers that have an excess of forty-plus hours of work in this past year, and the theme for the week is Hands That Help, Hearts That Care. In addition, we will also host an award reception during Volunteer Appreciation Week on April twenty-fourth to recognize the outstanding youth, adults, and group volunteer winners. We'd like to formally recognize the outstanding work of our volunteers through tonight's proclamation and continue to thank our volunteers for the generous work they give to the City of Tualton.
Thank you. Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate being able to share this, since I won't be able to come on the twenty-fourth, but really appreciate all of our volunteers so much. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world, and whereas in twenty twenty-four, over seven hundred and fifty volunteers contributed approximately sixteen thousand hours of their time and equivalent of about eight full-time employees to the betterment of our community, and whereas volunteers give freely of their time, talents, and energy, and ask only for a thank you for their countless hours of service, and whereas it has been a longstanding tradition in our community for individuals, families, and local businesses to volunteer to make a difference in our community, and whereas it is fitting to recognize our volunteers for their dedicated service, now therefore be it proclaimed by the City of Council of the City of Tualton, Section One, the week of April twentieth through April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, be proclaimed Volunteer Appreciation Week in the City of Tualton. Section Two, the City of Tualton takes great pleasure in honoring volunteers in our community and conveying our sincere gratitude and appreciation for their committed, selfless, and compassionate efforts. Our volunteers truly contribute, hands that help, and hearts that care. Introduced and adopted this fourteenth day of April twenty twenty-five. Thanks to our volunteers.
All right, that brings us to item number four, recognition of Tualton Arts Advisory Committee member Dawn Upton. Julie and Dawn.
Good evening, Mayor Bubinick and members of the council. I'm Julie Ludeman, Recreation Manager and Arts Advisory Committee Staff Liaison, and I have the distinct pleasure of being here tonight to formally and publicly thank Dawn Upton for being a fifteen-year member on the Tualton Arts Advisory Committee. Dawn started with the Arts Committee in two thousand and ten, and during that time, a lot has happened, and Dawn has been involved in a lot of different arts-related decision-making, and just a few of those things have happened since two thousand and ten. So right at the very beginning, when Dawn first started, and I'm not going to make her talk about this, I'll do, this is part of the honoring, is also honoring that some people don't love to talk in public, and I totally understand that. So anyways, when Dawn first started, the committee was finalizing the installation of the Gateway Geese, the monument at the entrance to Tualton on the east side. They have purchased forty-eight pieces of art for the Tualton Visual Chronicle. They have commended twelve different organizations and individuals with the Community Enhancement Award, including most recently Mitch Charter School, which was a recommendation from Dawn. The committee has also provided over twelve thousand dollars in arts agency support grants. Dawn participated for many years in the Art Splash, Art Show, and Sale, and also with the Centennial Art Installation of the Lazy River, one of our large, one of our large pieces of public art. We've installed two different storm drain murals. We've had one big mural installed at the picnic shelter in Tualton Community Park, seven traffic signal box wraps plus more coming this year, and to be installed later this month, the three service-inspired art pieces at the Tualton Veterans Plaza. It's a lot, and that's just kind of scratching the surface of everything that Dawn helped contribute to in her fifteen years on the Arts Committee, and I for one am really going to be sad to see her go. She's just been such a steady presence in our meetings and has really a good perspective and is always willing to share, which I really appreciate, and so I just wanted to publicly thank Dawn for all of her service and wish her the best in her future. Thank you. Thank you.
Want to say anything, Dawn?
Not really.
I'll give Counselor Brooks a moment to comment, too.
I also, it's been a pleasure working with you, Dawn. When you were speaking, I totally agree. I think that you bring your unique perspective, and although you might be shy in front of a microphone, you're always willing to share your perspective with the team, which I think is such an important piece when we're working together in committee, that we all share our perspectives, and you have served with such a commitment, such a big heart, really wanting to stand for everybody in our community, that's really been certain, and wanting to have very good quality work in our community as well, and always standing for those values, and then also all the things that you do in your own personal life that's giving. I too will miss you. I think we held on to you longer than we thought we could, and will be, we hope that you stop by and visit the committee whenever you want, contribute, come to the plaza opening, you know, all the things. Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you.
Before we give you your certificate of appreciation, I was, before the meeting started, I was talking to Dawn, and I was a young, young counselor when you started, so a lot of those projects, you know, I was there for with you, and as Counselor Brooks said, I always appreciated your insight. You might not like to talk publicly, but you had great insights and questions, especially when we're looking at the art for the collections, you were dead on in evaluating them. I remember the Waiting River sculpture, all those things we did while I was on the committee. You were there, you never missed a meeting, as far as I remember, you were, and we were meeting in person back, mentioning those days, and it was back with Paul Henin, was in charge of parks, we're meeting at the old Parks Building, that house that was kind of scary. Yep, yep, being inside there going, huh, then Paul shows you the basement, and you're like, yai. So, but I want to thank you a great deal for all those years. You've been in it, you had fantastic views, again, very much thank, you know, fifteen years is a great track record. I was teasing her about, you know, breaking Buck's record, but you know, only a few more years you hanging in there, you could have beat Buck's, but greatly appreciate and thank you very, very much. I mean, that's a lot of time over fifteen years with monthly meetings and sweating our butts off at Art Splash, you know, for those couple of days and helping with jury and everything, so thank you, thank you, thank you very much. So I've got this terrific certificate of appreciation to present to you.
And I will take some photographs. Oh, thank you.
Analyst William Sullivan with Dawn. Dawn's got a jacket on?
I couldn't let him outdo me.
Thank you, mayors, members of the council. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce William Sullivan as the newest member of our Finance Department. William is a management analyst, started here on March sixth. He'll be doing budget work, he'll be doing the grants, your most recent grants policy you adopted, he'll be our resource to the other departments doing grants. I do a lot of other research and analysis, finance-related things, just a resource across the organization. William started on March sixth. He has a depth of experience in local government, he's got a master's in public administration, he did two stints as a research analyst for the Institute for Policy Research and Engagement down in Eugene. He was also an intern with the City of Lake Oswego and the City of Falls City, and most recently came to us from the City of Olympia, Washington, where he was a performance management analyst. When I did my reference checks on him, one comment, when I talked to someone over at Lake Oswego, the first two words out of her mouth were, he's amazing, and then when I talked to people in Olympia, they said he has a passion for local government, and we're seeing that already in his first month plus. Some of his interests, and the only reason I have his resume, which when he sent me, on Friday we met, and he said, I'm doing up my resume, and I went, wait a minute, you've only been here since March, what are you? But his interests, I thought I would share what he wrote, keeping up with new movies and shows, trying to keep plants alive, getting into good books, day trips around Oregon, finding new restaurants with friends, and this is the one that got him the position, and you'll like this, Council President Pratt, and making spreadsheets for pretty much everything. So please join me in welcoming William to our team.
Welcome, William.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The floor is yours, you have anything to say?
I'm recovering a little bit, it's very kind of you. Dawn, I'll just thank you, Dawn, for having me, and to the city staff team for being so welcoming, and glad to be here and excited to do some good work for the city.
All right. Were you commuting to Olympia, or are you moving, or?
Moved.
You moved, okay.
Yep.
That's what I was going to say. Well, welcome. Dawn has a fantastic finance team, they're, you know, especially with budget time, you're coming at a great time, you know, this is very important because, you know, cities have to run on a budget unlike, you know, federal governments, that we got to stay open, we got to finance things, and we have to make sure things get done completely on time and on budget, so very much appreciate you joining the team. This will be your first budget season with us, we have a terrific Budget Committee, the city councilors are on it, and I look forward to working with you over the next couple of years, and the grants thing is going to be interesting, considering grants seem to be disappearing in certain places, but maybe they'll reappear somewhere else, and helping us track that and ideally winning them, well, it's group effort to win them, you're the one that has to track them and implement them and make sure we check all the boxes and make sure we keep that money, so I want to welcome you to the City of Tualton.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll circle back on the month of Military Child Recognition. Come on up. Welcome, Lorraine. You can bring chairs up, too, if you all want it, you don't have to stand.
Thank you.
Sure.
Welcome all. Hello.
Squeezing tight.
So thank you. So for those of you that don't know, April is Month of the Military Child, and we brought some of our team panel members here today. Purple is our signature color, because if you blend all the branches together.
All their main colors.
All their main colors, you get purple. So I'll let them kind of introduce themselves, and kind of, kind of what has been your experience as a military youth?
Okay, I'm Maddie.
No, you don't have to move, just move the microphone down.
Oh, gosh. Sorry.
I'm Maddie, this is my second year on the team panel. My experience as a military child was definitely like challenging, but it's, it means so many opportunities that you wouldn't get as like a normal, because I've met so many people, made so many experiences, and having this month really shows like how much people care, so thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Camila, this is my second year on the team panel, and my experience as a military youth is different than others, but being in team panel has really, like Maddie said, given me so many opportunities that I wouldn't have gotten, and Month of Military Child is really important to me and to others, and it just shows, again, how much we care.
Sorry, hello, my name is Barrett, I'm on my fourth and final year of the team panel, and my experience with like the military, my dad, I grew up with my dad deploying out of the country a couple of times, and my sister joined the military as soon as she could going into college, and just having that appreciation of a month where like all the branches are represented, represented is really nice.
Because we recognize that our, as much as our service members serve, their families serve as well, and so for Katie and myself, who's the other coordinator, this month is very special to us, so we appreciate you guys recognizing it as well.
Right, yeah, because this is kind of special for me as ex-military, you know, I've done the research, and I know what, there's like a million and a half, you know, military children in DOD, and what people don't realize is the families get uprooted every couple, three years, depending on the branch, depending on your rank, so your child is just making friends, getting a group at school, and boom, you reach, you know, you're moved somewhere else, and then in addition to moving every few years, you've got the issue of deployments, also one of your parents is gone for like a year, nine months, a year, maybe even longer, and that puts a lot of stress on the family, so I think it's super important to recognize, you know, military youth, because you guys have to be super resilient, especially if the kids are deployed overseas, because they're in DOD schools, you know, if you're stationed in Germany, you're in a DOD school, and you're seeing class members coming and going constantly, so you might lose one of your best friends, you know, and you guys have to bounce back, and so it takes a special kid to be able to deal with this, and a special family, because that family is what makes that service member, or service members when you have mom and dad, you know, as, you know, both in the military, you know, they have to have that support network just as much as you support them, you know, they need to, you know, be, you know, make sure you're okay when they're gone, and so I very much appreciate every time, you know, giving this recognition to you guys and coming here, because, you know, being in the military is a calling, it's a sacrifice, and especially if you have a family, it is super hard, you know, I was single, I didn't, you know, didn't have to worry, but I had, but I've got, you know, people on my platoon, in my battalion, that, you know, they're, you know, when their, when their kids were sick and stuff, it makes it tough to be in the military, but families make it work, and, you know, the military units make it work, and I just want to commend you guys for coming here today, and thank you for being here, and, you know, and supporting your parents, and supporting this organization.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
So that brings us to public comment. So public comment is an opportunity for someone to address the council regarding items that is not on tonight's agenda. It can be either in Zoom or in person. Please keep your comments, did I skip over?
Is there a proclamation?
Nope, nope, just, no proclamation. Please comment about three minutes. If there's anyone here in the room who would like to address council, this would be appropriate time. Anyone signed up? You don't have to be signed up? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we have no public comment tonight. All right, so that'll move us on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items that are considered routine, and be adopted by one motion unless someone in council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of three items. One, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Item number two, consideration of resolution number fifty-eight seventy-two dash twenty-five, authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept local government grant program funds to rehab, to rehabilitate the playground at Tualton Community Park, and finally, number three, consideration of resolution number fifty-eight seventy-three dash twenty-five, authorizing an amendment to the agreement between the City of Tualton and Tualton River Keepers for management and operations of city property. Would any council like any of these items removed and heard separately later tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read. Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any questions or concerns with those motions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to special reports. Special report number one, the Tualton YAC report on the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, DC. These two troublemakers are back. Welcome.
They're going to get you for that hot mustard.
Yeah, the hot mustard. That wasn't that hot, was it? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bubinick and members of the city council. My name is Ava Marsh.
And I'm Cosima Slider.
And we're here today to give you a report on our recent DC trip.
Yes. There we go.
So a little over a month ago, Ava and I got the opportunity to represent the Tualton Youth Advisory Council in Washington, DC, at the National League of Cities Conference, Youth Conference, and in this photo, we took our official NLC photo. Here you can see Julie Ludeman on the left, and then going to the right, there's Council President Pratt, Ava, Mayor Bubinick, Counselor Brooks, and myself.
Okay, a few highlights from the council, or from the conference itself, sorry. We were able to network with a lot of other youth councils from all over the country, which was really cool. I made so many fun connections, I still talk with a lot of people. We were also able to learn a lot about the issues and other projects that they're doing in their own communities, and we can think about ways that maybe we can bring some of that back here as well.
Outside of the conference, Ava and I were able to visit the National Museum of Natural History and the National Botanic Garden, which was, oh, it was beautiful, so beautiful. We also toured the National Mall and visited the Library of Congress, and I would say my favorite part about having like a touristy journey in DC was probably taking a nap on the National Mall, right in front of the Capitol Building with the Washington Monument behind us. It was, it was a great time.
It was beautiful. Okay, and then the meat of the conference itself was the workshop sessions that we broke out to, into, so we were working with a nonprofit organization called Unleash, and we did, basically, it's called a hack, so it's a community-based problem-solving methodology, where they broke us up into little teams, and one of the things I really liked about that was we were able to work with the same team all three days, which made it really easy for us to get a lot of things done, because we didn't have to go through all the awkward icebreakers getting to know each other, and basically, we were all presented with problems that are faced in a lot of communities. One of like mine was diversity and equity, and they had ones like.
Urban, urban policymaking, yes.
Yeah, so they were more broad problems, and we met together, and we basically framed the problem, and then we ideated, which was like kind of thinking together, brainstorming smaller things within those bigger problems that we think that youth in our community face, and then we prototyped it by basically trying to figure out solutions to the problem that like we could possibly implement in our community, and then we tested it by essentially putting ourselves in the shoes of someone that could be affected by this problem, and seeing what they need and like what they can do in their community to try and make that better, and then we implemented it by presenting it to the rest of the council, or the rest of the conference, and that would kind of pose as us here presenting it to you guys on whatever our like solution to the problem was.
Yes. So after coming back from the conference, we brainstormed a couple of recommendations for the future, and so one of these was having a Tualton problem-solving hack, which would essentially provide workshops to the youth to come up with a way to solve a problem here in our city. So we would visualize this in a way for, it's like the youth of our city to engage in giving productive feedback to the city council. Another one of the recommendations we made was a program that we were thinking of bringing back from, I think it's over a decade ago, and it's called Meet the City. So what we would be doing is taking students on a field trip to the city's facilities to not only learn how they can work, but also learn about the people who work within them and who keep our city running. And last but not least, to continue our efforts on mental health, we are going to be, later in the month of May, Mental Health Awareness Month, we will be attending a fair held by, hosted by LEAP. hosted by Leap at the, at Tuolton High School that is focused around mental health awareness.
Yes. Okay, that's all we have. Thank you so much again for you guys' constant support. I really appreciate being able to have this opportunity, not like even just with the Youth Advisory Council, but also being able to go on such a crazy, amazing trip and meet so many people. I really appreciate all of it.
Yes.
All right. Questions for Cozy and Ava? Council President Pratt?
Well, it was so nice to see you guys in Washington DC. And I have to say, you know, sometimes we get a little cynical about the youth and seeing that group and that room and how hard you were all working, how focused you were, was just amazing.
No, thank you so much.
How many people you think, I mean, that room was packed. How many people you think were there?
It was actually, there was, it was 25% Oregon.
Yeah.
There were a lot of people from Oregon.
I think it was like, wasn't, it was over 500 kids.
Okay, I think, yeah.
I want to say, a lot, there were a lot.
There's a lot.
Yeah, it was great. We met a lot of people during the youth reception. That's when we had to, the time to kind of meet other people who weren't in our group. But, yeah.
Now you said pins are back, so next year we gotta remember to bring
Yes.
A bunch of city logo pins.
My lanyard was still-
Yeah, yours. All right, Council Brooks.
I want to thank you too for making the effort and coming and showing up and being leaders in your, in your community. There was a couple of things from the ideas. As far as using the hack, I think that's a wonderful idea and consider me a resource if you ever have anything that you want to run by. I'm sure all the rest of the council feels the same way. Two, with the idea for Meet the City, I hope that you include the city council as well and talk with your peers around how we advocate and bring things to attention to the city where people need and other areas of government. And then finally, the same with mental health. That was a field that I've worked in for decades and as a clinician, so I'm happy to be a resource if you ever need anything like that.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much.
Just reach out with email or whatever.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then just want to ask Council President Pratt alluded to, enjoyed very much going to Chinatown with you guys and having, having dinner. We had the Lacy Susan spinning around and stuff. It was a lot of fun, you know, getting the, you know, letting our hair down and chatting and trying all different kinds of Chinese dishes and getting you guys to try a hot mustard.
Yeah.
But again, thank you for taking time out to go to DC and represent, you know, the City of Tuolton. I greatly appreciate it because like when Council Pratt and I visited the conference, you guys were working away.
Oh, yeah.
Took a breath to come out to talk to us and ran right back into it. Thanks for coming tonight and continue your volunteer efforts. Looking forward to hear more updates from the YAC on these ideas that you had.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Special report number two is outside agency grant awardee, Tuolton River Keepers, Mr. Fee. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. Thanks for letting us come and present. It's actually great timing since we had the event that you funded in part this Saturday, this past Saturday. So it's like I can begin here. So I'm going to begin just with a quick overview of our work. It'll dovetail, I think, into what we did utilizing the grant. So we're Tuolton River Keepers. Actually, this is just downriver from here. This is our annual cleanup that we do in October. I think this is just below Tuolton Community Park. One of the things that we do is we get people out in boats to clean the river. Luckily, there's not a whole lot to do, which is great. So programming-wise, we do advocacy work, so we advocate for clean water. We do river experiences and that's getting people out onto the water. We think that that's sort of the gateway to them becoming advocates and then also doing restoration work, which is the third leg of what we do. So this is, you helped fund a, oop, thought there was text below there, maybe it'll come in. No, that's okay. I'll go back. So part of the funding was for us to hold an Earth Day Fair. So when, when the trail went in last summer, I believe it was, we noticed immediately a huge increase in the number of users there. I think it's a somewhat underserved area. There's the apartments right across from there, the Rivercrest Apartments. We saw families suddenly start to use that trail. We saw people who were in the RV park in Romer's Rest come over. It really sort of created a sense of community around our home, which, which is the office. And thank you, by the way, for the consent agenda and approving another year. So we wanted to have a gathering out there and include Tuolton residents. And so we had an Earth Day Fair on Saturday. We had just over 100 visitors there. We had a boat sale. We took families out and buy marans. So we attached canoes with kind of a wooden structure between. It's really stable and we can paddle families out onto the river and buy marans. We made birdhouses. We did habitat restoration work there. So you all started, you did a great native planting, the Parks Department out there. We sort of picked up on that and just continued to remove invasive species, plant native species. I'll detail that in just a moment, but we did that on Saturday. And we had a number of our partners out there. So we had the Friends of the Tuolton River National Wildlife Refuge, the Xerxes Society, which supports invertebrates. Ubinian Bee City in Tuolton, it dovetailed well with what they do. We had Clean Water Services out there and we had one other that I'm missing right now. So four of our partners, I'm sorry, Trout Unlimited, thank you. So the Angling Community, that's also a restoration community. So this is one of the families that was out on the river with us, with adorable twins. Another family that was out there did come down from the Rivercrest Apartments. They came down to see what was going on and we got them out onto the river. So again, great for us to get people out in this, this relatively dense area of the city. We had an annual boat sale. So we had 40 boats for sale. We ended up selling about 20 of them. And the great thing is most of them were, were $50 boats and they went to people who just wanted to get on the water, who live along the water in Tuolton. So really wonderful to see them getting out there and purchasing their first boats. There's four launches in the city, which is, which is really incredible. I think out of the 11 launches on the river, four are within the City of Tuolton. So we want to get residents out there in the boats. So these are donated boats or ones that were taken out of our fleet and, and we sell those annually. So these are some of the partners engaging on that beautiful new trail there that you all put in. Oops, missed one here. Skipping over it, that was, that was some kids building bird boxes out there. So the, the piece that I think is, is really fun is this, the habitat restoration work that we're doing. Dustin and I met a few weeks ago. I tried to give him at least a few weeks into his new position to start talking to him about habitat restoration. We have 12 volunteers that we've trained over the last six months to serve as restoration leaders. So it's really increased our capacity to do this work. We do a lot of work with Jackie and she's terrific, mostly here, but also Tuolton Community Park. But we're talking about other areas that we can really have an impact on. The way that we do it with other cities is that we, sometimes we'll get grants with the cities, we'll have partial grants and contracts. So we really increase the capacity of the city to do these kinds of works, these, these kind of projects. And we're finding more and more residents who are really engaged in it. Our goal is to get people who live next to natural areas, we train them, and then we hope that they will in turn sort of own those natural areas. So we'll set them free. The first one that we have is actually in Tigard. A gentleman who lives along Fano Creek is doing work on about a half acre section behind where he lives. And we hope that there's other opportunities to do that here. In fact, one of our restoration leaders found us by walking the trail and who lives in the Rivercrest Apartments next to us. So this could be a spot that this gentleman could help us manage in the future if we enter into that sort of a agreement with, with Dustin and his, his crew. So really quickly, I want to talk about, about our work and how this works with the city. River experiences is sort of how people know us generally, getting out onto the river. We have a project that we're, that's nearing completion. And so we're developing all new maps for the river. We're developing new signs. So the signs that you see at all the launches that are in various states of disrepair, those are going to be replaced this spring. And this is through a grant from Explore Tuolton Valley and the, it says state trails. I'll keep it simple. But we worked with the National Park Service. So because we're a national water trail, it opened up National Park Service resources. They've helped us develop all these resources. And so the physical map that you'll see, it's not up here yet. You can sort of see it on the right, and that's not the completed one. It looks like one of the maps you'll get when you go to a national park. So we're all kind of national park geeks. And to see that and see the Tuolton River Water Trail on that was really, really kind of a feather in the cap, it felt like. But that came from resources working with the National Park Service. That's going to launch on June 7th, which is National Trails Day. So we're going to do a big rollout. All the signs won't necessarily get out right then, but our website will be active. There's a new Tuolton Water Trail website that we're working on right now. It's going to be one where we can do real-time updates. So if there is blockage of the river, or if there's some sort of issue on the river in other parts upriver where it's a lot more narrow, we tend to have more of those kinds of issues, that gets reported and it goes up on the website. It's going to have detailed descriptions of all the launches, including the four here in Tuolton. And then we'll have inset maps on each of those locations. So if you're a paddler, what are you going to see when you, when you visit those locations? So we're thrilled about this and we're going to be rolling it out. It's what, six weeks from now? So a little scared of how quickly that's coming up, but we're on track. So river experiences, I want to mention the River Runner Program. I did speak with Dustin about this. We have a program that's rolling out this spring as well. We have 14 volunteers that have adopted every section of navigable river. So the Tuolton has 39 miles that are navigable. These are residents mainly down here in this part of the river, the people that live along it, they paddle it. Generally, we'd like them to get there every four to six weeks during the warmer months. And they report back to us on a number of different conditions that they see on the river. So if they see erosion, if they see log jams, we're looking for beaver activity. Want to see more beaver in, in parts of the river. Forest condition, Emerald Ash is going to be an issue. And that's one way we might partner in the future. So that's rolling out in conjunction with this new website. And then lastly, again, we're, we're a national water trail. This symbol here, the Tuolton River National Water Trail, we have that on, I think they're 12 by 16 inch metal pieces. And so we want to work with some of the cities to use this as wayfinding. So it'll have arrows beneath it pointing to access spots along the river. That'll be something that we roll out. Obviously, we need to work with Public Works and, and different departments. But again, another really exciting aspect of what we're doing on the Tuolton. And then lastly, I want to end with, I mentioned the National Trails Day, which is June 7th. Shouldn't, I think that's the right day, yes, Saturday, June 7th, where we're going to be rolling this out. And then June 21st is Discovery Day. Every year, we paddle a different section of river. So we get about 150 paddlers out there. We do shuttles, we bring out load after load after load of boats. People bring their own boats. We're paddling from King City Community Park this year all the way down to Tuolton Community Park. So really focusing on this section of river because it's one where there's a lot of exciting projects going on, obviously, as you know, with the work that's going to be coming up at Tuolton Community Park. So we want to highlight a section of river that we think a lot of exciting things are going on. So that's June 21st and we'd love for you to come out and paddle with us. So any, any questions?
Questions for Mr. Fee? Council Brooks?
I want to thank you very much for the work. And I, I of course am a big fan of wondering when we can get like a sign of our own or a t-shirt or something like that of the trail. I think the National Water Trail is really neat and how soon you think we'll be able to get the brochures and share them also maybe with our library and the other national trail that's here with the Ice Age Trail.
Those, those brochures, and that's, that's, thank you for mentioning that. We, we will have a Tonkin Ice Age Trail on our website and other trail connectivity. So we want to highlight that we're a water trail, but we also want to highlight that there's other great trails around. So that's going to be available on there. Those maps will be completely, June 7th is the date we're giving, but they'll be finished by the end of May. And so we'll be bringing those around to libraries and different, all, all over the watershed. So those will be community amenities by then.
And then just because I was there the other day and noticed the sign, and we have another guest today too, is, is it the property for the Backyard Habitat Certification?
That's right, yes. We, we are working to, to get the property certified. And that's something that we want to hopefully use as a showcase for, for native habitat. And that's something we'll, we'll kind of continue to have discussions. Obviously, it's, it's the city's property, but we want to help use our resources to manage it. And we'll, we'll talk to Dustin about how that could look moving forward.
Thanks. And one final one, just because I saw the, okay, so I'd heard from the Heritage Society all about the old tour boats, the, the swan boats. And actually saw that swan boat. Could you talk a little bit about the-
Yeah, so, so as some of you know, and this history is going to be on the website as well.
And the archive, yeah.
We've, we've got some really, we've collected some really fascinating history. So Romer's Rest used to be a kind of a entertainment center. And there were, there were five of them, I believe, along the river. Wish I had our historian here with us. So one of the owners of, I don't know if it was Romer's, one of the other ones in Tuolton, they brought up five swan boats from the San Francisco World Expo, 1908 Expo, and they had those out under the river when that used to be the thing to do. We were going, our volunteer was interviewing one of the old owners, and this is probably about 15 years ago. And he said, wow, we, we heard about these swan boats that used to be on the river. I sure wish some of them are around. And the guy said, well, let's go out to my garage. And he went out and he had three of them in various states of disrepair. And our volunteers put them together. And so we do have one functioning swan boat that we can get out into the river. It's massive, but it does float. And so we're going to be getting that out, hopefully actually for Discovery Day this year as well. Again, as a way to really kind of highlight the history of the river and, and the success story that the river is. It's, it's, for those of you who grew up here, it's a completely different place than it was only, what, three decades, three decades ago. Thank you. I didn't queue her up for all of these, but I appreciate it.
Councilor Gonzalez, that's my call.
Thank you so much for this update. My questions are around EAB, Emerald Ash Board. And what are you thinking about that? I'm in the industry, so I know we've put massive plans around this, more so to mitigate the expense all at once. So what's, what do you, what do you, what are you thinking around that?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we want to be an asset for cities around that. So every city has a different approach. I think regionally, we want to get out ahead of that. We know that most of the ash trees are, we're going to lose them. I know in some city parks and some private lots, people can work to protect them, but they are going to go through a lot of our natural areas fairly quickly. We want to hopefully be a partner in doing a lot of planting to make sure that the understory is preserved. Our, our main fears is river temperatures. So the ash trees, especially in the upper watershed, account for most of the rivers, most of the trees that are protected, the temperatures in the river. So where there's, there's, there's regional groups working on this, which you, I suspect you know about. But we're hoping to use our ability to get out, get out on the river to plant trees, but also be through this River Runner Program, eyes on the river. So we want to, we want to geo-tag a lot of the trees along the river so we can get ahead of that. So I know, I don't know if that answers your question.
You're, you're involved, you're eyes on, eyes on the ground and
Yeah.
Giving information, which is very important. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Council President Pratt?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for your restoration work because our river's such a great natural resource in our community and it's, it's kind of like a whole new world when you go down there. Also, no, I lost my train of thought. But, oh, I was going to say, I, I really appreciated the map you currently have, so I'm really looking forward to the new one. And I thought maybe when you do your little trip down from King City, you can have a little test of what direction you're going because that curves so much in there.
I know. It's, I mean, it's, it's really in the summer, it's hard to know sometimes if you don't know the river or actually which way it's flowing because it's such a slow river. But we are, we are going to make that very apparent in all of our maps. And then again, the, the, kind of the game changer for that is that there is a digital one now that people can access. And so most parts of the lower part of the river, obviously, you get reception on that. So that's not an issue at all. Thank you.
Other questions?
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight and thank you for using the grant money in such a great method and getting people involved and getting people to see the river because most people don't see it, they just drive by it. They just drive by it. Or a lot of times, they don't know it's there because it's hidden between the malls and stuff like that. So getting people nervous is important.
Well, we appreciate your support, and we can't wait for the new sort of front door of Tuolotin to begin to unfold on the river. It's really going to be an incredible amenity.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Our next special report is the Backyard Habitat Certification Program Report. Lindsay, I think she's being accompanied with, by Catherine and Susie, and Susie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lindsay Marshall, Public Works Management Analyst. And I am here tonight just to introduce Catherine Noble and Susie Peterson from the Backyard Habitat Certification Program. And just to remind you of the background of how we got here. The Backyard Habitat Program has been supported through outside agency grants from the city for a number of years. And this last fiscal year, we entered into an official partnership with the program. We're supporting them with $10,000 a year, and it's a three-year contract that will evaluate and will hopefully continue to roll over. But we're really excited about this partnership. It supports so many of our goals in the city and in Public Works, thinking about the Climate Action Plan, our water conservation, because if you're planting native tolerant plants, you're going to reduce your water consumption. Thinking about stormwater, so that runoff that's going to go down your yard into our stormwater system. So there's just a variety of ways that this program can really support the community. And I won't steal all of their thunder, but they've already been doing a lot of work in Tuolotin already. And so this extra support funding that we're able to give them is just going to continue to bolster the work that they're doing in our community. And even in the last two weeks, they've been out three, at least three times, the library, the high school, one of Jackie's Put Down Roots events. So you'll see them, you'll continue to see them through the support. And we're excited to have them come back every year and tell us about the work that they're doing and how it's going to build in the community over the next few years. So I'll let them take it away. We'll roll backwards.
Thank you so much, Lindsay, and to all of you for making space for us here. I'm not sure what's up with that one photo, though. It's supposed to be the other way, but you get the gist. So yeah, we are the Backyard Habitat Program, and we are managed by two nonprofit conservation organizations in the region. So I'm Catherine Noble, and I work with Bird Alliance of Oregon.
And I'm Susie Peterson, I work with Columbia Land Trust.
And our program's mission is to provide tools, resources, and recognitions for gardening sustainably and creating wildlife habitats. And we do this through offering site visits and site-specific recommendations to residents and community sites, as well as providing a wealth of resources and some financial assistance through coupons and professional directories and things like that. So we're going to do a quick overview of the program for those who don't know, and then we'll get into some specifics about the work that we're doing here in Tuolotin. So with all of the news of climate change and all of the impacts that we've, especially in this region, been experiencing within the last decade or so, one of the things that we do as a program is help offer folks a sense of control and some tangible actions and goals that they can take to help mitigate climate change. And so we think of those things as through making up for lost habitat. So we talk a lot about how there is a loss of habitat, particularly in urban and suburban areas, through development, and a lot of that can be reclaimed. And there can be a lot of wildlife corridors that are created and strengthened through during restoration work on private land. And also, things that can be done to mitigate climate change include things like planting trees, as well as shrubs, soil amendments, all of those things make a collective large impact. And also reducing man-made hazards through reducing use of pesticides. You'll see a lovely cat paw there, having some thought about how you have your cats outdoors or indoors. And also mitigating window collisions and bird-safe things like that. We will get into more. So a brief overview of how the program works. It starts off with somebody enrolling in the program. And this can be pretty much any private residence, if they're under one acre of land, and any community site. And for us, a community site just means any location where multiple families benefit from it. So we have a lot of schools, it can be places of worship, different organizations in the community, community gardens, things like that. So they sign up, we have a sliding scale fee. So this is a one-time payment that we ask that people can pay as little as $5 or way more than that. And kind of, we encourage like a pay-it-forward model. And then the rest of us, our program is subsidized through great cities like you all, who are helping us offer that to folks at a really minimal cost. And once they're signed up, they get assigned one of our habitat technicians. We have six who work with the program, and they provide at least a one-hour site visit. For community sites, sometimes it can be a little bit longer, because the property can be much larger. And at that site, they discuss what the goal of the property is, you know? We like, we really encourage folks to have food gardens and have spaces for kids to play and dogs to run. And so we kind of talk through how they might want to divide up the space so that they can meet all of those goals while also preserving some space for wildlife habitat. And at that visit, they also get a large resource packet that's offered both electronically as well as, in a paper copy if that's preferred, as well as coupons. So we partner with 16 native plant nurseries in the region, and they all offer some form of a discount to our participants on an annual basis. And then after the visit, the participant also gets a site report that's emailed to them. It's usually about six pages long with all of those recommendations written out, including what plants should be planted where. One of our sayings is right plant, right place is how those plants will survive and do well. And you'll get a sign. So this sign here that you'll see in the picture is of a property that has gone through certification. But we also have a Habitat Restoration in Progress sign that folks get immediately when they sign up. And if they do achieve certification, a volunteer goes out to provide that visit and then get the upgraded sign as well as a photo. And they get highlighted on our Facebook and Instagram pages if they wish. And they are able to stay in the program as long as they wish and upgrades, or they can upgrade at any time and also renew for free after three years. And so I've mentioned certification levels. That's somewhat of the framework of our program. And so really, these are, these are three different tiers that are different sets of goals for folks to inspire them and help guide their work at their property. So we have silver, gold, and platinum. And silver is really designed to be really achievable for anybody. And so really, at this level, you only need to dedicate 5% of your plantable space to the program. So that can really, oftentimes, just be like a corner of a yard. All the way up to platinum, where we're looking for 50%. And along with that, there's some other, you know, increasing goals along the way for all of our categories that we'll get into. And so the goal of the certification really is just to inspire and motivate folks. And there's a lot of people who come through and don't care about certification levels, and that's also totally fine with us. We encourage people to be involved in the program and however they wish. And to get certified, often it takes an air between one to three years, depending on the amount of time and frankly, money that people can commit to restoring their yard.
All right. And so we like to think of our participants as restoration volunteers, because they're really out on the ground doing this work. They're spending their time and their money. So it's a huge payback for, we get a lot from the participants and what they're working on. So I always want to give them a big shout-out and big kudos, because we're up here managing, but they're really doing the on-the-ground work, so it's pretty cool. So these are the five elements of the program that we talk about with every participant. We talk about removing priority weeds, so plants that are on local invasive and noxious weed lists. I'm sure, I don't know if Tuolotin has its own, but we definitely have all the regional ones, and so we include those. And replacing those with native plants, and we'll get into each of these a little bit more. But, so planting native plants, reducing or eliminating the use of pesticides and herbicides. And then fourth is wildlife stewardship, and fifth is stormwater management. There's also a big volunteer component as well for reaching platinum certification. So priority weeds, probably most folks are familiar with these. Our most common ones are ivy, Himalayan blackberry, Lister celandine. So we're really trying to take, take the landscape from the photo on the left, which is a forest where the trees are covered in ivy, to the photos on the right where the blackberry has been replaced with native plants and are serving much more ecosystem function there. And then native plants, we might be preaching to the choir here. I feel like there's a lot of enthusiasm in Tuolotin for native plants. But they really are the foundation of a healthy ecosystem. Our insect populations, our pollinators, our wildlife, all have evolved with native plants for thousands and thousands of years. And so some of them are very dependent on specific plants. And if we don't have them, we might lose that pollinator species or that bird. And so really focusing on native plants is a huge part of our program. Which is not to say that other plants don't have benefits. But, and then pesticide reduction is a major component, because we really care about the health of our rivers, our streams, and keeping toxins out of them as much as possible. So we do a lot of education about how each home is tied in either upland or streamside to our waterways, such as the Tuolotin River, and encouraging them to use this resource, which is kind of hard to see on that one, a little easier on this one. Grow smart, grow safe, which Metro helped create. And you can look up products there to see how toxic they are. It's kind of a green if it's safe, yellow if it's not so safe, and red if it's known to be high hazard. So it's a great local resource. And then for stormwater management, we have a menu of options, because this really depends on the site. There are some properties that our techs will go to, and they'll say, you know what? I can tell you're interested in a rain garden, but honestly, your drainage here isn't going to be good enough for that. Or, so that's the great thing about sending out a technician who has skills and experience in this, is that they can help the participant, they can help each person kind of identify what their own interests are and how that, and as well as what's happening on the land. So they can try to kind of guide them to do the things that would be most helpful for managing stormwater. So menu items under here are planting large canopy trees, rain gardens, restoring soils, water conservation, and eco-friendly maintenance practices. And again, folks get to choose which ones work for them. And then we've got wildlife stewardship, a similar menu of items. Again, folks kind of get to choose. Maybe they have a tree that they are interested in turning into a snag. Maybe they're worried it's going to fall over, but an arborist can come out and kind of help them create something that will provide habitat for woodpeckers, for example. Reduced outdoor lighting, native plant meadows, and beneficial insect nesting habitats are other great common options. And we only require one, two, or three for certification, but honestly, I feel like most people just kind of go for as many as they can get. So it's cool to see how passionate people get. So what are the results? Catherine will share some stats later, but we have about 13,000 people throughout the region in the program. And so that is a lot of, we're creating a lot of awareness around the impacts of how these small actions people can take in their own yards really, really has a greater impact. And we're also helping to increase knowledge of natural alternatives. Maybe there are alternatives for kind of the way that we, as a society, largely have been gardening, but maybe there's alternatives that are healthier for the ecosystem. We're also decreasing toxins in our waterways and decreasing the presence of and quantity of priority weeds. We're increasing landscape permeability and wildlife corridors and supporting healthier and creating a kind of a base of folks who are interested in supporting more environmental efforts. So like your Climate Action Plan that you're working on and so forth. So, okay, I'm handing it back over to Catherine.
And we just wanted to highlight, one of the ways that we're able to accomplish so much of our work is through our partnerships. And so we have a lot of partnerships with culturally-specific organizations. So two we just want to highlight real quick is Verde and Central Cultural. Verde is in north and northeast Portland. And we work with them to provide free rain gardens and naturescapes every year. Central Cultural is over on this side of the river, out in Cornelius. And we've worked with them, what started out as helping them install a naturescape on campus, has turned into an EAB workshop group with students there. That is turning into more of like an annual cohort-style program. And we also have a lot of community sites, which I'll highlight a few that we have here in Tuolotin in just a couple of slides. So regionally, and just to touch here what regionally means to us, we work in four counties. So we're in Washington, Multnomah, Clackamas County in Oregon, as well as Clark County up in Washington State. And so within that area, as Susie said, we have over 13,000 properties enrolled. And we're adding an air between 1,000 and 1,500 a year. And collectively, that adds up to over 3,000 acres within the region. And then, you know, there's some other stats here. I will highlight here that I submitted this to Lindsay and then realized we hadn't updated our number of trees and plants on here. So that number is actually closer to 350, 350,000, sorry. And here in Tuolotin, so as Lindsay mentioned, we have been, our presence has been in Tuolotin since around 2019. And we were getting a small amount of support through the Community Change Grant up until recently, when we are very excited to have more consistent and larger support from the city. So thank you. And so up until, I just ran these numbers a few weeks ago, we've had 83 properties enrolled. And we have an annual goal of about 16 new sites a year, which we are on track to meet this year. And we so far already have 23 properties certified. And so here, that looks like over 16 acres enrolled and growing, and over 2,000 native trees and shrubs planted. And one of the really exciting things about having this more robust partnership with you all is that we are able to do a lot more community engagement. And so a couple of community sites that we've been able to work with just this past fiscal year have been Tuolotin River Keepers, which was really great to see them. And one of their photos, in the very back, you can see one of our signs. And then Tuolotin High School, which I was able to be part of the visit just last week. And they're working on three different kind of sections on their, on their property with one of the science groups, which is really neat. They have two bio swells and then another just completely blank field that they're planning to turn into like an outdoor classroom with a greenhouse and everything. So we were able to kind of get in and offer some advice at the beginning, and I'm really hopeful to see how that turns out. And we have also been doing outreach events. So we, back in the fall, we did a presentation with PEO. And just this past weekend, we were at the Arbor Day Plant Event. And I think also in the same weekend, or somewhere in here in April, we were also at Tuolotin Public Library. So we're really excited to be able to do more of those events. And here you can see highlighted a Tuolotin Heritage Center, which was a site that we were able to certify a few years ago. And I just wanted to highlight here some of the smiling faces of participants in your city. And a little bit more data approach to that. You can see here how those are spread out. So you can see there's a little key here, green means in progress, and the other colors are folks who've been certified. And we just wanted to thank all of our different partners. We partner with about 20 different municipalities in the region, and we're really excited to have you all onboard in this way. And if we have time, if there's any questions, we'd love to answer them.
Thank you. It's so nice to see you. Susie, I met you because a constituent reached out about this program and was advocating. And during COVID, when I was, we, Council President Pratt was with us. We're doing the Tuolotin Sustainability Network. You did a wonderful presentation. One of the things that really struck me was the data that you had about the bird loss. And I was curious if you would speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so I think, I'm trying to think of the specific stats here. But we've lost, I believe, one in four of our birds in the last, I believe, 50 years. And we're in a really unique spot in, well, in the country, but also in Oregon, where we are on the Pacific Flyway. And so I'll actually highlight that tonight is one of our red alert nights for migration, nighttime migration. And one of the leading causes of death with birds is window collisions, as well as getting distracted by light pollution and getting pulled into city centers during nighttime migration. And so And so one of the, one of the elements you'll see on our wildlife stewardship options is to reduce outdoor lighting, and that is specifically encouraged during spring and fall migration time because millions and millions of birds pass through our specific area. And the, one of the other leading causes of death of birds is cats, actually. And so part of our program is encouraging folks to keep their cats inside or have some sort of plan. I have a cat that I absolutely love, and he goes out on a leash with me. We have other folks who have caddios, or even just keeping your cats indoors during, like, the dawn and dusk periods of time is when birds are most active. So I hope that answers, kind of speaks to your question, but those are some of the ways that we, we spread that knowledge to our participants.
Yeah, no, that's great. And then also, I have to say too, with working and learning so much since I've been on City Council, listening to what people want and then learning more about it, the sort of synergistic relationship between the B-City goals, improving habitat, increasing pollinators, reducing these pesticides, same with River Keepers and the riparian goals of keeping our rivers cool. And it was startling to me that our city was like one of the top ones on that infrared map that just came out, measuring the heat of the cities in our area. So, so I appreciate it and wonder around ways to work together with the common goals that we have. I had another question, but I can't remember what. Oh, I know. I was also wondering, I know that my neighbors and myself, we've dealt with rats, we've dealt with different kinds of problems with pests and things that we could use support with. So I know that your website, and what I love about this too, is that there's a lot of free resources, whether people are enrolled or not, on the website that are accessible. But I was just wondering if we could show like where the, the land, the business professionals part, just for, to show people that they can access this, whether they're working on their garden with you officially or not.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. You're right. On our website, backyardhabitats.org, we have, you can see Resource Library up there on the top right, and we have over 130 different handouts and links to other websites, lots and lots of information on any of the topics we talked about and more. So anybody can access that. We want that to be widely and publicly available. And the professional directory is something that we've utilized for a long time, over a decade, and built up over the years. So we have about 65 businesses listed in here. So these are all local businesses that provide landscape. They might do installation, they might do maintenance. We also have arborists on the list. We have folks who do, we have a couple of businesses that do pest control with like, but they're all kind of through the lens of supporting the, supporting the ecosystems. And so they're all required to come to an annual training that we put on, where we bring in guest speakers. Like, a couple of years ago, we had someone come in and speak about EAB. This was ODF, the state, so they were able to like share some really in-depth information about Emerald Ash Board to our staff, to our volunteers, and to all the businesses in the directory, so we can create a whole community of folks keeping their eyes open for EAB. We've also had guests come in and speak about fire and the importance of fire on the landscape, and also how, of course, people are concerned about fire. So how to find that balance between, you know, fire is an important ecosystem function, and also how to, how to help people keep their homes safe. So there's a lot of, lot of kind of additional ongoing education we try to provide for the businesses. And we point our participants to them so that they can get that further help if they need it. So we, we try to give back to the community by really supporting businesses in ways that we can, either nurseries or the folks in our directory.
I just think that's really cool, because a lot of times we'll ask friends and things for, like, who are you using for cleaning a roof, or this or that? And so to be able to have something that has gone through all these years for a reference point is, I think, a really valuable resource. I happen to be out of town when I got certified, but I just want to brag that I got my gold sticker and was certified in whatever month nine is, September. No, it goes till the 27th.
It's, yeah, you were certified in September, and then it's good for three years. So you're, you're good for till 2027.
And then I hope to get up to Platinum. Platinum has a lot of cool things about community stuff and, you know, like, people doing garden tours and different things like that. So hopefully, we can build a sort of a community like that around our gardening. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? All right, all right. All right, Catherine and Suzy, thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so it moves us to items removed for consent. We had none. Then Council Communications. I just want to again promote the, this Friday at the library, the Town Hall, Representative Walters, Nguyen, and Senator Wagner, at 6:30 at the Tuolton Library Community Room. It's your chance to chat with your representatives in Salem. They'll be discussing the transportation package, their priorities in the remainder of the session, and the state of the city's budget, among, you know, other things that you might want to discuss them in person on Friday at 6:30. Any other communications? Council Brooks?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody about the state of the city that we're doing. It's a breakfast, it's free. And if you want to know what the council's priorities are and what we're up to, it'd be great for you to join us on, can we have the date? The 20th of, the 22nd of this month, so the 22nd of this month. And we'll all be there talking. But I think it's really cool that we're doing it at the Grand Hotel. And it's open to anybody that wants to join us, and the breakfast should be good. I also wanted to wish everybody, whatever they celebrate during the springtime of the year, around equinox and Easter, which is really important in my Greek people, and Passover, et cetera. And, and then finally, oh, just a reminder about the Veterans Plaza ribbon cutting, and the art installation should happen at the end of this month. And the ribbon cutting will be at 9:30 in the morning on Memorial Day. So come join us for that. It's going to be a most beautiful, the art's going to be so amazing, you guys. So I can't wait for everyone to come out and enjoy it. Thanks.
And the state of the city is on the 23rd? 23rd?
Sorry. The state of the city is on the 23rd, which is what day of the week?
Wednesday, I think.
So what, yeah, okay. Wednesday, the 23rd, at 7:30 in the morning. Get up early and have a nice breakfast and get your day started off right.
Any other communications? All right, so we have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn the Tuolton City Council meeting of the 14th of April, 2025. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Anyone want a five-minute break before we go to the TDC meeting? So we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll start our TDC meeting in five minutes. April 14, 2025, Tuolton Development Commission meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for folks to address the commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Please leave, limit your comments to about three minutes. I'll first take comments from people who are in the meeting room today, and then go to folks on Zoom. Do you have anybody in the meeting? You don't have to be signed up, who would like to address the commission tonight? How about on Zoom? Nope? All right. We'll move to the consent. Tonight's consent agenda has one item. Consent agenda is, those items are considered routine. We pass by one motion unless a commissioner would like to have the item removed from consent and heard later tonight. The one item on consent tonight is item number one, consideration of approval of Tuolton Development Commission meeting minutes of June 24th, 2024. It's been a while since we've met. Yeah, so it's the budget, yeah, wow.
I move that we approve the, the minutes of the June 24th, 2024 meeting. Second?
I have a motion, a second, on adopting the consent agenda as read. Any comments on those motions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. That moves us on to general business, downtown revitalization. Sid, welcome.
Well, good evening, Chair Buvenic and members of that commission. It's a pleasure to be here, excited to be here. This evening, I was going to talk a little bit about the proposal for the downtown revitalization. And I was going to touch on a couple of things, like the vision, you know, why now? Why are we doing this now? Some project goals, what committee might, might be in place to chaperon this process through, and talk a little bit about kind of the process and scheduling. And then finally, at the end, I'm hoping to, to seek the commission's support to move forward with some of this work. With that, I always like to start kind of new planning processes with, you know, the vision for the area. And in 2022, as you know, the commission adopted the Quora Vision Plan. And it's, it's a great vision. It has had some good structure to it. You know, it talks about, you know, strengthening the social, cultural, and economic vitality of central Tuolton. It really kind of focuses on that downtown area. And I think that's a great place to start for revitalization of the downtown. It also had some priorities that it talked about, about community identity. That's one of the things that I hear a lot, talking with people in the community. We have no identity, how can we create that identity? Talks about connectivity, wholly important to make sure we have multimodal connections. Talks about collaborative effort and process, protecting our natural resources, like you heard this evening, with Backyard Habitats, the Tuolton River. I mean, those are such huge assets for this community. And it's so exciting to have it right next door to our downtown, and there's so much potential in that connectivity. Talks about creating mixed-use developments, that creates the intensity and density for that downtown core activity. And it also talks about expanding housing opportunities. This is a great area. It's right on the west line. It's a great transportation bus line. So definitely ticks, you know, checks a lot of the boxes. But as we're talking about the vision, we're talking about priorities, I almost like to kind of whittle everything down into, I mean, what is urban renewal? What are we doing in that process? And to me, it's about creating equality of life. And to me, equality of life in this community, you try to make unique spaces and places that are memorable, that you want to bring people to you and share that experience with them. And you talk, and when you talk with other people, they're like, I remember the waterfront walk in, in, you know, Boise, Idaho. And that's what I'm talking about, is creating these spaces. The other thing is, you know, economic vitality in supporting our businesses, all the way from our downtown businesses, mom and pop stores, to our large manufacturing and other industrial uses. And then lastly, community branding, like, what does this community want to be? And how do you brand that community? And, you know, there's, a lot of people use the, the, you know, they say, live, work, and play. And I mean, I still believe in that, that you can have a great community where you can live, work, and play. So with all those things in mind, that's what I like to keep in mind as I, as we go through this process. So the question as, as to why now, I mean, that's one of the things that attracted me to the city of Tuolton. It is in a great position. I think it is ripe for redevelopment. You adopted the Quora Plan in 2022. It's, you know, you're projecting $140 million of public investment into the infrastructure of that downtown core area. To me, you've signaled to the development community and the public that you're committed to investing in the downtown. So, I mean, and it's been accruing tax or commit revenue for the last several years. So the ball is rolling. We talked about the Veterans Plaza tonight as well, and that's just, you know, another landmark, another commitment from this commission and council. We also talked about the Riverfront Park property, and that to me is, is one of the most exciting things about the downtown, is that opportunity, that opportunity creates that, that downtown civic plaza, that community neighborhood, living room, where everybody wants to gather. And to me, that is kind of the beachhead for urban renewal. If you create kind of that space where people can meet and kind of grow from there into the downtown area, it'll be a great catalyst. And I know in a community not far from here, they had the same formula, where they created that downtown park, and that was kind of the beginning of their downtown. So extremely exciting. And then I talked about just the untapped potential and ripe for, for development. And so exciting times for this community. So overall project goals, to me, it's like, how do, how do we put the downtown, put it in a position where we can revitalize the downtown area, create redevelopment opportunities? One is build upon a lot of the work that's already been done, a lot of great work from some comp plant work, the TSB that's going on right now, and the Quora Plan, and engage the community, continue to engage the community in this process. One of the things I'd like to see is that this is a community-guided process, and they have ownership on this. We're just kind of helping to guide the community in that process. The other thing I want to stress is like, you know, this process, our end product is going to be implementation of how to put this community in the best possible position for redevelopment. I know there's, you know, we're, we're challenging economic times and conditions, but now's the time to start this planning. And so in two years from now, this community will be ready and open for business for redevelopment. And then lastly, you know, how do you encourage redevelopments? And to me, it's, one, you have to provide certainty to the development community. And through this process, I think we're going to give people an idea of what this community's vision is and the identity, and also reduce risks for the development community, and how do we partner with, with our development community to make these things happen? So how is this process going to, who's managing, who's, you know, what's our public involvement? And so what I'm proposing is, is a 12-member community advisory committee, very similar to the 10-member community advisory committee that was used in 2022 for the Quora Plan. And it has a lot of the same, similar composition. And I imagine this committee will meet at least once a month throughout this process. And this is kind of the competition, composition that we've proposed, city council members, parks advisory committee, community involvement organization, chamber, property owner, and some type of commercial or housing development representation. Those were the same representation in the previous Quora Plan meeting. New to this committee, we'd be adding a representative from the Aging Task Force and the Wanty at Paul Center, someone from the Arts Advisory Board, because that is one of those things that just really helps create kind of that, that vitality in the downtown area. And although a youth council member has the opportunity to, to meet Kosi outside, and I was like, wow. I mean, just the amount of meetings.
She's from my program.
Yeah, yeah, I was like, I, I'm thinking back when I was a sophomore, I'm like, wow. So very, very impressed with, with Kosi and Ava as well. So that's, oh, and, and the last representation would be someone from the Idea Committee as well. With this committee to help support the committee, we're looking at having a technical, an internal technical advisory committee. So we make sure we're, we're communicating with other departments that are going to be integral in this process, talking about engineering, planning departments, parks and rec, and also our, our partners at Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue. So the next slide, there's not going to be a test on this, it's just mostly kind of a general idea of the two-year process. And so this, this, we are looking at a two-year process. And probably the cost, we're looking at maybe a city cost of maybe 125,000. And there could be potential matching funds from the University of Oregon as well. But what this is illustrating is that we're starting from that, you know, that Quora Plan vision. And then we're trying, the next phase would be developing an identity and place making, which might be about a which might be about a five-month process. After that, we're going to take the ideas that come out of that identity process and translate that into 2D and three-dimensional drawings through some partnering with the University of Oregon, and then finally, creating some design code updates to, again, one, provide some certainty as to the downtown, what is, what are we expecting of what level of design quality and construction quality are we looking at the downtown? And then finally, that gets us to the implementation process. So that's kind of like the overall arching idea, but I want to talk a little bit more about the phases themselves. The first is that community identity phase, and we're proposing to use Seville's Michelle Reeves, she's an urban strategist, and I had the pleasure of working with her at my previous location, and she did a fantastic job in bringing kind of the urban design part of it, and integrating that and bringing the business community into that process, especially for this downtown core. We want to make sure we engage that, those stakeholders. Process itself for public outreach would include some small group, focus group interviews, community survey, some technical assistance for several businesses or properties, and that was, that'd be an example of doing a one-on-one with a business, and the CAC would help kind of identify what businesses we could share that technical assistant with. And then the big community involvement piece would be a Civic, a community workshop. And the outcome of this is, again, trying to create kind of that baseline, what's the community identity? And then from that, we'd go into conceptual designs and code amendments. The second phase is a little longer phase, it's going to be about nine to 10 months. It'd be partnering with the University of Oregon Sustainable Year Program. It's a, it's a great program. I went to the UVO for both architecture and urban and regional planning, so, and I always thought, if I ever had an opportunity to bring their design studio into this, I would absolutely do it, and this is a great opportunity to be able to tap into a lot of that resource. So that process would look at doing a site analysis, but really the focus of it is doing design, a design charrette, and again, taking that community identity and translating that into two-dimensional and three-dimensional drawings. The starting point for maybe some of those areas that the design charrette would focus on is, back in 2022, there was this opportunities map that was created, and that would be a great starting point for that. The other two drawings, there's a couple of drawings on the bottom. Earlier this year, I had the opportunity to participate in a, as a reviewer for a design studio, a fourth and fifth-year design studio, and this is some of the results that they did. The design studio was for the City of Gresham's Community Center, and so I was impressed with the quality and the thoughtfulness that they put into it, and just the visuals that they were using. So this is just kind of an example of what I would expect to come out of this design charrette. And then the last phase is kind of more the technical phase, is taking that, that identity, taking the three-dimensional drawings and kind of translating that into design code for this downtown area. We have in our Tuolton Development Code Chapter 73E that already has a central design district in our downtown core, and that's the pink area that you see on the map on the left. And that would be, that's, this is a great starting point, because it really talks about, you know, a central Tuolton concept, city connections, spaces and landscaping, and buildings, and those are all the things that we can expand from that and apply that to kind of this area, and as part of the CAC process is really, where do these design standards apply? Is it just strictly to this area, or does it expand to the other areas? And the aerial to the right shows, highlights some of those properties that were identified as opportunity sites in the future, and as you can see, it's that six-acre riverfront property, again, just absolutely, you know, jamming this community. And then there are the other two properties, but again, through this property, the CAC might identify other properties that we should look at, you know, this is a great time to do that. And then lastly, excuse me, we get to implementation, and, you know, we're anticipating by early 2027 to be able to get to that phase, and that is going to be an ongoing process. To me, that is the beginning of redevelopment in the downtown area. I feel like I started kind of planting the seed about redevelopments even before I got here, when I reached out to the development community and said, what do you guys think about Tuolton? They said, well, keep an eye on it, so, you know, things, great things are going to happen here. And so during that implementation, I think it's a great opportunity to look at the Quora Plan again, look at the projects, see what has come out of the community identity process and the charrette process. Take a look at our current plan and see, are there potential amendments that we can make to kind of fine-tune that? Actively promoting development opportunities, I mean, that is, that's kind of the core heart of this, is really selling this downtown and the amount of potential that it has. And in fact, I won't name names, but I know there's someone in, from the development community in the room today, so it's starting to work. And then lastly, it's, you know, critical to this, and the formula that's been used in the past that I feel has been extremely successful is public-private partnerships. It's a, especially for the first developments in the downtown, there hasn't been a lot of developments in the past. That first developer is going to come in with a lot of risk. We're trying to reduce that risk. We're trying to increase the confidence in the development community to invest in this community. And so trying to seek like-minded partners in that sense is going to be, I think, a big focus of downtown redevelopment as well. So with that, and the last slide is just seeking any input that you have, and hoping for some direction to be able to move forward with creating a community advisory committee, contracting with Seville's for the community identity workshop work, developing an intergovernmental agreement with the University of Oregon, and then lastly, to move forward eventually with some code amendments. So with that, I am open for any questions you have. Thank you for your time and your patience.
All right. Questions for Sid? Councilbrooks.
Hi Sid, thank you very much. I enjoyed your first presentation very much, and appreciate all the work that you put into this. It's one of the exciting things that we're doing, in my opinion. I know that, there's a couple questions I had about the, one was a little bit more about the, the, sorry, the Sustainable City Program?
Yeah, so, excuse me, so that program has been around for, I think, quite a while, like 15, 20 years now. They partner with a lot of Oregon communities, small and large, and it's an opportunity to, one, is engage kind of academia and kind of harness their interest and their energy and creativity, and apply that to real-life situations. And to me, this is a great opportunity where both the city as well as the university students can benefit from this process, where it's, you know, looking back at kind of my time doing that, that was probably one of the best things, is being able to do that, and, you know, this is, you can't just do necessarily, you know, sky and the play kind of concepts, it really, you have to, it's within this framework of land use and community identity and land use and things like that, so. Great opportunity, and it's a great value, especially if we're able to get some grant funding as well in that program.
So I guess my question is more about, is, I, when I looked at sustainable, I don't know if it's relating to community or environment, or if there's an environmental component, that's the one thing I was thinking about from the list of people participating on the committee, was having somebody from one of our contractors or one of our people from the Climate Action Plan, whoever's doing that.
Okay.
But somebody with climate expertise.
Climate, okay.
Yeah, not just.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, whenever we're doing development projects, I think, you know, we try to be as sustainable as possible, be it, you know, is it a LEED-certified building project, or is it backyard habitat in an urban setting like downtown? It's kind of intriguing to me, you know, so absolutely, the, looking through these opportunities through a sustainability lens is going to be part of that process.
Yeah, and then the, also with the thing with identity, I also want to make sure to remember indigenous people too, when we look at the images. And then the third, I will say, we've also had good work with, as far as the environmental side, with Oregon State University, because they have really great resources with that, that's who helped us with our IPM, our Integrated Pest Management Program with theirs, and we've had good interns from there too. And then finally, what's the last one? Oh, we've had very different experiences with developers, I'm going to be the one that says this, so we've had really good experiences where people have come in and talked to the community, as they were developing, and really had a lot more buy-in than others. And so, and I know the city's really aware of this, and it's not something, but I just want a point of mind, just because the community feels so much more well-represented, and sometimes it's not something that we're scratching out on paper, it's something that has to do with relational acumen, and so I just want to really encourage that with, especially that particular community. Otherwise, though, this looks fantastic, I'm so excited, and I think the environmental piece is really important, especially when we're coordinating with the Parks Department on that land close to the river, I just don't think we can leave that up. Thank you.
Councilholder.
Thank you. And go Ducks, of course. Double Duck, it's a good thing. So I'm really excited for this project, and I just am wondering if you could speak just a little bit more, please, to develop an IG with the UVO, with that program, is that not an internship thing that you have to actually apply for, or is it a straight-up IG?
Yeah, it's a process that you, you do apply for, and I've spoken like several times over the last three months and expressed our interest to say, we would love to participate in this, and I've met several times with Megan Banks, the director, and she understands what our goals are, and that this would fit their program. And so they have the capacity to partner with more than just one community and do like up to 20 projects. We'd be looking at this main design project, and maybe some smaller projects offer that. So yes, it is a application process, but I've, I'm very encouraged by the discussions that I've had.
Great, thanks. And then, maybe I misunderstood with, so the contract with Seville's, do we have to go out and get other people? Are you asking us to approve that tonight, or are you asking us to give direction to hire someone to do the community identity work, or could you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, so I would be asking the commission to direct staff to go ahead and move forward with Seville's. We can do a direct-to-point, because it's less than the contract amount for a direct-to-point, and I've just had some really great experience, and I think this is the right company to be able to do it, and have a lot of confidence in their process and experience.
Great, thank you.
Council President Pratt.
I'm going to go back to your, this intergovernmental agreement with the University of Oregon, and I just want to understand it better, is it, do they look at the whole area and come up with sustainable ideas? You mentioned LEED-certified buildings, but do they look at like vertical gardening, making places that are, I guess, motorless for people to walk, and look at the whole overall plan, or what do they do exactly?
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's part of the beauty of this process, is this first five months, we're going to be focused on creating community identity, and while we're doing that, I'll be working closely with the university as well as the CAC to help kind of define those things, is, hey, having, you know, green roofs is very important to this process. We can build into the scope of the design charrette what's those things that we want that the designers to focus on. For me, it's the streetscape, you know, is it, you know, is it just, do you close off streets? I don't know, I'm just throwing this out, I'm not advocating, but to look at the downtown holistically, focus on this downtown area, but certainly know that whatever comes out of this process can be applied to kind of other areas in the downtown area as well. So, yeah, so I think there's a lot of flexibility, especially if, you know, if there's certain things, sustainability, certain design things that we can focus on.
Just having, just passed our Climate Action Plan in May, I think it would be wonderful if we pulled the actions from there and just kind of made it an example, you know, in a more forward-thinking kind of area.
Yeah. Other questions? Councilbrooks.
I have one more now. You mentioned that you particularly like this firm, and can you just tell us a couple things that you like about them?
The depth and breadth of what they do, they do work specifically in the Pacific Northwest. They're based in Portland, but they do a lot of work on the East Coast as well, so you get kind of, kind of both ends, and you're just not, you know, focused in the Pacific Northwest, so there's, I think, bringing ideas and concepts. Michelle has done this for many, many years, I went through it back in 2012 for a certain community I worked in, and I thought the results were, you know, very good, and I think the results kind of speak for themselves to a certain degree as well. So I just, and I like her energy, I like her thought process and engaging small groups to large group process, using surveys to do that, and so it's kind of a range of community outreach processes, and really, the more difficult part is really simplifying all of that, right? Taking all that information and what comes out of that, you know, the sausage-making process, and making it usable for the next step.
Okay, great, thank you. It sounds like she's got a lot of scope of vision and relational expertise, and is able to put things together in a good way, and that you two have a good relationship, so that sounds good to me, thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So thank you very much for this presentation. My hope that as we're thinking through the concept planning, that we're not developing strenuous red tape, okay? We know that green roofs take a lot to develop, and takes different kind of clothes to develop. I manage green roofs in downtown Portland, and the development stage for those were quite arduous. So as we're moving forward, we want to be mindful, of course, but we also, we want to be mindful that it needs to be built, and it just can't be super expensive, super liability. Green roofs look, sound great, but they're very hard to maintain in the real world. They're very costly for a building to maintain as well. So we want to make it affordable. So I hope that those things are taken into consideration. Also, sustainability is important, and how things are maintained, because, sure, they cost when they first get built, but they have to be maintained efficiently. If it's going to be city parks or city streets, then that means we have to employ more people to maintain high-maintenance plants. So we've got to be very mindful of who is chosen for these kinds of projects. It looks pretty on paper and wonderful, but is it sustainable long-term? Because sustainability isn't just environment, it's can we sustain the cost on an ongoing basis for our constituents? So I just hope that you have that in mind. Also, you also have in mind, as you're developing these ideas and Also, you also have in mind as you're developing these ideas and concepts, improvising code, that we're also thinking of water conservation, preventing certain technologies to not come in because they're wasteful, they're inefficient. The first thing that comes to mind is battery controllers for irrigation. I'd prefer to have central water sources to be able, to be able to manage more efficiently. So since we're looking at the whole plan, it's still something that can be very important to consider because all those costs to the builder as well.
Yeah. Absolutely. Constructibility, maintenance, affordability. That's why I'm hoping, a lot of the outreach I've been doing now is to the development community and say, be part of this process, help shape this code, make sure we write a code that you guys can implement with your input, but yet understand that this is a community code for, for this community's downtown. But definitely having them at the table. And, and maintenance, I, I agree with you, that is probably one of, one of the most challenging things with urban renewal districts, with urban renewal funds, it can only go towards administration and capital projects. So where, where does the maintenance, when you build a streetscape project, you have to have the end in mind, and how do you, how do you maintain that over time? I, you know, great points.
I, I bring that up because, you know, we don't have sustainable funding for maintaining our current parks now, so they just add to it. So one last thing I want you to add, talk a little bit about is, you've mentioned the possibility of grant funding. Where would that be coming from, and what, what does it take to qualify for that?
Yeah, so with, through the Sustainable Year Program, through, through the UVO program, they've already received, received grant funding. It is a federal grant-funded program, and I keep on asking every month, is it still available? The response is, as far as we know, yes, we are proceeding as if it is available. If in fact it is still available, then it will reduce the city costs to participate in that project. If it is not available, we have put into the next year's fiscal budget enough money to be, to be able to cover the cost to, to do the work.
I'll, I'll close with this. Is there one, I, you, you included some pictures of some cities, you know, the way they look. Is there one particular city that you can point to that's kind of like driving your vision a little bit?
I, I would say there's, yeah, like Oscego, where I spent the last 25 years doing planning and urban renewal. So I've had a lot of successful public-private projects. You, you know, you need that first, first project to kind of set the stage for everything and to show to the development community that the city is committed to doing urban renewal and redevelopment in the downtown, and that you have the political will and, and support and city manager's support to be able to work with developers on a private, partner of privateness. And you have to show that, that you can do these types, types of projects. And that, and again, that's what drew me to, to Alton is they're, they're, it, it checks all, all the boxes.
We are an open canvas, aren't we? We are an open canvas right now.
It, it is, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a great opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I've got one question. Why TVFNR on the committee?
They participated in the 2022 process, and we just wanted to keep them engaged in this process. They are, they, they are in the Cora, in, in the Cora boundary, and so eventually, this type of redevelopment efforts may fall, you know, move over in, into that area as well. And so that was kind of the rationale behind there. And, and as part of the technical advisory committee, you know, they might have some good input as, as when we start intensifying the, the downtown core area. And, you know, I'm, I'm always for collaboration and having partners in the process.
Okay.
Unless, unless there's other, other opinions here as well.
TVFNR wasn't my favorite participant in the first phase of this. I don't think it was Councilor Sacco's either. They limited what we could do because they were worried about their tax money. So that's my reluctance to involve TVFNR other than for technical things, you know, streetwear, stuff like that.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, it just, as, I just want to see what they're involved, and I don't want to hear anything from them, this is my opinion, about funding, money impacts of TVFNR, that's not their role.
Yeah.
And that's what we heard about last time.
Okay.
And I don't want that to happen again, because this is a visioning process for our downtown, for our community. Yes, they have their fire department for us, but I don't want them to have the ability to hold us back. Yes.
I'm just going to add to that, when I look at your list of who you're including, that's the only other governmental entity you've got on this list, so. Everybody else is really involved within our, I mean, TVFNR is too, but these are people with a real vested interest in our community on your list.
I don't think, I don't think Sid was suggesting that it be part of the CAC, the Community Advisory Committee, be, be the internal, internal committee.
Right, that's right.
But we'll take your advice.
I mean, Councilor Sacco might add a line here.
I'll just say, so I have spent some time with the actual, the fire department. We've, I've done a community event with them, and a lot of the actual, the, the, the folks that are in the, in, in the station, thank you, Station 34, they have some great ideas on what they would like to see in that area. So maybe like specific folks, I know we have one, one particular, one particular member actually lives in Tuolotin and then serves on, on, in Station 34, so that might be a specific person that would be really good for providing feedback.
I think you got the gist of our concern with that.
I, I did, and like I said, I'm open to the feedback.
If they have vision and help the process versus hold us back, yes.
Yep.
Okay. So as far as Sid's requested direction, are you comfortable, there was one addition on the community advisory committee to have someone representing the sustainability, climate folks on that committee? As anyone else, how people feel about the makeup, their suggested makeup of the community advisory committee? Are we okay with that? All right? And we're okay with Seville's? Working with UVO and the Ducks? Yep, all right. And code amendments, I mean, I know there's money socked aside as part of the urban renewal zone to pay for all the work that's going to entail, because it's not a, a small lift here for these code amendments. So I have no doubt we're okay with the, making those code amendments that are to be required, you know, as a result of the design charrettes. Are we okay with those? All right? Councilbrooks.
Last year, when Council Pratt, Council President Pratt and I were down in Bend for the League of Oregon Cities, we did several tours, and one of them was with the City of Redmond, where they had done some renewal and redevelopment. And that city manager was really amazing. They had come up with super creative ideas. They were very willing to be resources for us. They had everything from our installations that were on loan, that were for sale, that were in the community, and then they get 10% for themselves. And there was an interesting design that he had gone through to do those things. They'd also done really innovative things with housing and just a lot of brilliant ideas, so. I'll, I'll look for his card and forward. Yeah, it was amazing.
They did a lot of public-private partnerships.
Yes.
They showed how, I mean, they, if you knew how, I don't know how long you've been around, but Redmond used to be, now it's downtown Redmond, so that's where you go. And it's now this amazing place, very vibrant, and they did a lot of public-private partnerships too to be successful, so it was really amazing.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Last year at the OYDA, which is Oregon Economic Development Association Conference, there was a specific session on urban renewal, and, and Redmond did a presentation, so I mean, it was some, some pretty awesome stuff they did there, so, yeah.
Just talk back.
All right. Yep. All right, so do you have what you need?
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, you Sid. That's the end of our business for the TDC. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous? Thank you. Make sure to get all your taxes done by tomorrow, and don't forget the SHS tax. Most people forget, they file their Oregon, they file their federal, they forget to file the metro tax, and you do not want a letter from the City of Portland saying you didn't pay your metro tax. Have a good night.